You're on.
Okay, the Planning Commission meeting for February 22nd, 2016 is called to order. And the first item on our agenda is a presentation. Metro Associate Regional Planner Jeffrey Raker.
Hi.
Good evening.
Yeah, thanks for welcoming me in and having me down here. I'm new to the region, so you'll have to excuse me if I'm duplicative in my presentation to you guys and in any, you know, you might know more than I do on many of these issues, but I'm learning my way.
It's pronounced Willamette.
We had many pronunciations up in Seattle where I'm from that are similar, so I hope I do alright.
Snoqualmish?
Yep, Snoqualmish, Delaware Guamish, squim, there you go.
Sequel.
That's right. So I'm from Metro, the regional government, and the regional government has seven, it's a seven-member council from six districts and then one that's region-wide for the council president. And it's the only elected government in the entire United States that's at the regional scale. I was back in Seattle and it's a similar model, but it was not regionally elected. It was made up of locals. And Metro is primarily known for its management of growth and transportation planning and investment. And it serves as the metropolitan planning organization for our region. And essentially that, the primary role of that is to distribute federal transportation dollars and support the planning efforts in the region. Part of my role is to work more closely with the jurisdictions. We have been attempting to be a little bit more forthright in working closely with the local jurisdictions. And I am here to sort of introduce myself and hopefully offer as much assistance as I can to do so. And the federal transportation funds are allocated to 25 cities amongst the three counties. We also manage the urban growth boundaries, so you've obviously been fairly familiar with these things. Metro also does solid, management of our solid waste and recycling. There, it runs the zoo, the convention center, the expo center, the performing arts center. We operate the transfer stations where you can drop off all your hazardous waste. So it's quite an interesting regional government model. I actually find it fascinating that it has these ownership and sort of facilities management roles that in many areas it does not. And I think it provides a unique perspective that sort of aligns with the planning and makes it a little bit more on-the-ground in perspective, which hopefully translates. But I hope to help that in any case. And then you're probably familiar with the 2040 growth concept, and it was adopted 20 years ago. There's a total of 37 areas, centers that are, sort of concentrations of growth to focus the growth into, and seven regional centers, 30 town centers, downpound Portland being the, obviously, the primary and center, central city. And then 300 miles of prioritized corridors for development, as well as the urban and rural reserves, most of you are probably deeply familiar with. The focus is to provide a mix of housing and employment, served by the multi-modal transportation system in collaboration with Trimet and the other one transit agency that I'm forgetting because I'm new to the area. And then to, to provide focal points in these centers and corridors, provide civic activities and public services, and increase the efficiency of our infrastructural investments. We also work on protecting industry in terms of supporting freight mobility efforts and designating certain industrial lands for protection. And I am actually, I've been hired to support the economic development, somewhat of a new emphasis for the regional government, in which we're exploring how we can be a little bit more effective in aligning our transportation and land use development and investment with economic development outcomes that have been stated by local and regional organizations. In tandem with that, we work on a, a number of things to support sort of more green infrastructure and park systems and the open space in our area. And creating a network of parks, trails, open spaces through the help of the Parks and Open Space Acquisition Program. We have a number of grants, such as the Nature in Neighborhoods Restoration and Community Stewardship Grants that are somewhat small, but definitely effective in supporting a local jurisdiction in some of the efforts that are catalysts for future growth. So it's been two decades of three regional votes. Back in 1995, there was a $136 million bond, and 2006, a largely successful one, as well as the one in 2013. The primary function that I serve, in addition to connecting you to the resources and being a liaison, liaison generally to Metro, is to support the development review and land use review function, to look at how the city complies with a framework and functional plan. So the framework plan is more the policies and functional plan being more the tighter sort of regulations. When we review the local jurisdictions, sort of the changes to zoning, there's no review required for things like home occupation permits or signage or design review or cell towers or temporary use, as well as, you know, the marijuana laws and partitions. But we do look at no net loss of zoned residential capacity. In industrial areas, we look at whether the restrictions on those uses in those areas are being met, as, as looking at whether the standard buffer widths and restricted uses are in place and continue to be, as well as a little bit of, well, just certain requirements and policies related to parking that are very large-scale. So finally, I'm the liaison. The primary function is land use and development review, general liaison to connect you or to support planning and development-related efforts in the city, and providing a connection to relevant project staff and technical expertise and other resources at Metro. So I just want to introduce myself. At the project level, obviously, you guys are probably familiar with Willamette Falls Project, which I recently got a tour of, and just, it's a tremendous project. I would be very much personally excited to be involved in that project and supporting it, and in this role, I hope to do so. But the project-level staff, as you might know, is Catherine Krier, and she works more closely on the small grant that Metro is providing to support that effort. With that, I'll just sort of introduce myself and see if you guys have any questions and questions for me.
Any questions from the commission?
I would, I have one, but it wouldn't be fair. I was gonna, what is the name of the organization that was there before Metro?
You tested me too much.
That's not fair.
I gotta look it up. I haven't gone back into the archives.
Are you going around to all the different planning commissions and city commissions to introduce yourself?
No, I am, I am here to be introduced just for Oregon City. I am specifically the liaison for Oregon City, in addition to the project-level staff that's working on the-
So there's different ones for each?
Correct. So that's a new program. It's a local partnerships program at Metro, where a staff person is assigned to support the local jurisdictions.
What interaction will we be having? I mean, will you be here often to hear what we're doing?
I will. I'll have definitely a staff-level interaction, and I think they'll draw me in where it makes sense, as well as just offering to back out where it makes sense as well. And, you know, I'm willing to serve whatever role makes sense for the city.
Right. Other questions?
So, I know you're fresh meat, I mean, I know you're new, but have you had a chance to look at, you know, the concept plans that are flying around for Oregon City, like Beaver Creek, South End, Park Place? I mean, we got all sorts of stuff.
Slowly getting introduced to the planning activities in the city. I will not claim to have deep knowledge of them, though. But I intend to.
So when we have issues such as, we want to swap 50 acres of industrial land for 50 acres of residential, or move it from this concept area to this concept, is that your role to review to see if the balance is maintained?
Correct, to essentially support those types of definitions. Obviously, I'll have to call upon colleagues to inform that effort, but yes.
But you're kind of the point person for the inquiry, I guess, if nothing else. Okay. Good.
Great. Yeah, I mean, we've also had outreach with Metro staff, Tim O'Brien and formerly Ray Vallow, who has spoken before this body, and the city commission too. So, look forward to carrying on a good tradition. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you all.
Next on the agenda is a presentation by Luke Norman for CCC Transportation System Coordinator. A moment, Luke, and I'll get this up.
We're a point night.
Yeah.
Is this the clicker? That should control.
Mirroring, mirroring.
I got the mirror, mirror. Or is there still an agenda?
Operator of board being sure. This is the design for the roads. Great. Thanks. So this is Luke Norman with Clackamas Community College, and he's here to tell us all about what his role is and what he does for the college. And take it away, Luke. Thanks.
Thanks, Pete. So I've worked, Pete invited me to come out and speak tonight. So, as I mentioned, my name is Luke Norman. I am the Transportation System Coordinator at Clackamas Community College. My main goal is to reduce transportation barriers for students. One in five students at our colleges has either dropped a class or been unable to complete a class due to a transportation barrier. And a key part of that work is increasing connections to our campus, and that's why I'm here today to share about the Clackamas Community College Transit Center. So this is a quick background. About 10% of our students use transit to access our campuses. At our Oregon City campus, we're currently served by Trimet, South Clackamas Transportation District from Malala, as well as our CCC Express Shuttle that provides express service from our Oregon City campus to our Harmony campus at 82nd and Sudyside and to Green Line at the Clackamas Town Center. Our current bus stop at Oregon City is also served by school buses from the both Oregon City School District and North Clackamas School District, as well as paratransit from Trimet and Cambie Area Transit. Our current facilities are both inadequate for the current service that we're receiving, and they don't allow us to receive additional transit service that Trimet and other providers are planning for the future. So if you can see the visual, this is just a quick snapshot of what our sort of transit center, transit stop looks like today. Right now, it has about a maximum of six vehicles in there. This is the layover spot for Trimet's 32, 33, and 99 services. It's, they both ended and started the line for them, so we sometimes are getting queuing as buses are unable to get in. It's also a tight space, so buses are forced to sometimes start and stop, move multiple times, maneuver around, which increases the chances for accidents, and passengers are also moving into the busway to reach buses that are parked in different areas. So it's been great to have this transit stop at our campus, but it's time to sort of look towards the future and look for ways of creating a space that's both safer and allows for additional capacity.
Where is it, oh, where is that? I was just gonna ask you where the bigger map was, and where is that in relation to most of the classrooms?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, right off to, you can see just sort of the corner there on the side, on the right-hand side, is the, that's our, our key, I'm thinking of the name, our key student center, and it's near our Roger Rook and DeJardin classroom spaces. But as you can see on the next piece here, as part of the community college's larger plan to update our campus, we'll be creating a larger gateway there that will connect the transit center to the classes and to the campus. The piece that I'm here today to speak about is sort of covered in that dotted area. It's the new transit center and then the shared-use path that connects to the Oregon City High School. When completed, the new transit center will allow for 12 sawtooth bus space, so six on each side, which will overdouble our current capacity. It will have those two transit-only access roads to serve the transit center, which will remove the potential of conflicts with personal auto, auto vehicles. It will have this new shared-use path to provide connection for people walking and biking to the Oregon City High School's property line, and we're working closely with Oregon City High School, because they're working to pave their own portion of the path. It'll also provide short and long-term bike parking right at the transit center, so people can either lock up their bike for a couple hours if they're coming to class, or they can lock it up in a secure place for the day. So a couple of the key benefits of it are outlined here. One of the biggest ones is that, as you may be aware, and Trimet will share it later, they're starting to plan out what's their growth for the next 10 to 20 years through their service enhancement plans. And this transit center allows us to be positioned to receive that growth, to receive additional transit service. Additionally, increased transit really helps our students access career technical education, which is a key part of our workforce development strategy. And with the new industrial sites being positioned along Beaver Creek Road, there's some great synergy there. Along with the shared-use path and the new bike facilities, this will help enhance the last-mile connection from our transit center to the Beaver Creek Road sites, as well as to the Oregon City High School. And finally, this is a key connection for rural residents. Residents coming from Malala, this is their only transfer point to reach Trimet services. So if they need to get to Portland for work, or they need to get to other social services in Clackamas County, enhanced capacity here and a safer transfer point is a benefit for them.
Before you leave, are you saying that, that it's gonna be like a park-and-ride there, that somebody from Malala or further out can park their cars there, take up the students' parking spots, and use this as a transit center?
No, I think-
I think you're referring to the fact, Malala, the earlier slide talks about there's a Malala bus line that comes up.
Right, but are you saying it's gonna improve rural residents to be able to park there and get to the bus lines, right?
For this point, specifically with the service, the bus service from Malala. So as we grow, we're able to enhance, have more Trimet buses come, so it provides better connections for them, and I know-
Clackamas Community College.
And for, to transfer. So right now, Malala residents, if they're coming up to Portland, they're transferring.
Okay. Just wanted to understand, thanks.
Of course. So just a couple of next steps here. The transit center that we've outlined for you is contingent on receiving a, successfully going through the Connect Oregon Grant process, which is run by the Oregon Department of Transportation. We will have our proposals reviewed by the Region One Area Commission on Transportation members on April 4th, and if we're successful, construction will begin in 2017 along with the other work for the campus. If our grant is not successful, we're gonna have to step back to the drawing board a little bit and figure out what we'll be able to develop with the existing bond funds we have available. Great. So I want to thank you for taking the time to listen, and just want to let you know if you have any additional questions.
Any other questions? I still have a question about that. So people from Malala or Colton and all that have the capability of taking a bus from those locations, coming in and connecting to a bus to downtown Portland? Is that kind of what you're saying?
They do, and also they can take buses if they need to reach county services at the red soil campus, and also medical facilities along Trimet bus routes in Oregon City.
So that's gonna increase those kind of, also, buses that come in there to take them to red soils or to other locations? So that's also something new in that?
It'll allow for, the connection is there, what it'll allow is to expand it. It will allow for greater, more buses from Malala to come up. I know they're talking about expanding. It'll also allow us to receive additional buses from Trimet, and as they look at their potential connector shuttle, we'll have space at our transit center for residents to transfer to those services.
And I think in their first slide, you said that 10% of the students take transit?
They do.
So there's enough parking for the other 90%? I noticed, I've been there before, lots of parking, but does that need to expand for the future too, for Clackamas Community College?
Not currently. Right now, the near-in parking lots do get very full, but in our larger parking lot by our Barlow Building, there is still capacity for parking.
Okay. Sorry.
And it tends to surge, you know, like nine o'clock, everybody has a class. By 11, three people have a class, and then one o'clock, 900 people. Does CAT do transfer there too? Cambie area?
CAT does if, for their paratransit service.
Oh.
So they'll connect there to Trimet service.
The other thing, can you go back to the big picture?
The map?
Yeah.
In the site plan?
Oops, sorry.
Got a little excited.
It looks like your transit area will come in, do its little transity thing, then hit a section Douglas Loop. My assumption is that they would loop back out to whichever direction, whether they're going to Beaver Creek or wherever. Is, are there plans to improve Douglas Loop? Because it's, I drive a big pickup, and when I meet another big pickup coming the other way, we do the, uh, and, you know, I can just see if buses are rolling through there that, you know, you might want to look at making sure you've got good striping and, you know, your shoulders are well-developed, because-
It's hard.
You know, well, it depends kind of on the other driver, because for one thing, driver speed along the loop there, and so they come in, they start cutting, you know, the corner and all that sort of stuff, and that could, I mean, knowing that there might be buses there might slow people down, but it also might create a conflict point where the bus is trying to pull out and the person's doing 45 instead of 25, and so I just would be concerned about that. But I do like the idea that there, it's, that we have kind of a, a south-end transfer point for, for services, especially because you're so close to those social services that they may need, that it's a good, good partnership.
May I touch on that also?
You gotta, you ought to come up here.
You need to come up.
You have to come up here, otherwise it won't pick you up, and we don't want Renee upset at us. He's the man behind it.
Remember, Myers Road is the road that kind of comes down below and then sweeps up. That access point that you're talking about will be our third entrance on campus. So the vision is the buses come in off 213, cross Douglas Loop, and end out through Myers Road, and not be using Douglas Loop as an exit point.
Can you introduce yourself now?
Bob Cochran, Dean of Campus Services for Clackamas Community College.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. So, looking at this picture, the top is where they're gonna come in, and then they're gonna exit out the bottom.
That's, that's our, that's our plan right now. We're just doing sketchy ideas.
We're just missing part of the man.
Just the way I saw it, I saw the bottom being where 213 is.
And that makes sense.
Okay, oh, that makes a lot of sense.
But that being said, does that add more traffic congestion with more buses and more transfers on 213, or?
Of course it does.
Well, I guess it would if they're looping around, but they're using 213 anyway.
Well, I was just wondering, if a lot more buses, a lot more transfer.
I don't know what, do you know what Trimet's goals are for total buses? Because I know that they're talking about queuing problems now.
I suspect we'll hear soon, because Trimet follows you, so.
But if, if you believe the bumper sticker, every bus takes 70 cars off the road.
256.
Not mine.
So on this, this map, where is the existing transit center?
Let me hit that one. Right in the middle of pretty much what, the SSCC? That's our New Student Services Community Commons Building, so that turnaround kind of-
Is there.
Is right in that.
Where the word campus is?
That loop.
No, right about where it says SSCC.
That's not a building.
Yeah, it will be a building. It's not a building now.
It's got a little laser. Be careful.
You'll have to turn around to see, but it kind of comes in and does a loop right about here.
Okay. And then you show bicycle parking, so I'm, I am assuming and hoping that you're including not just racks, but you've got lockers, because nobody wants to ride home on a wet bike. It's not fun. And, so that people can have their bikes secured, because I know my bike is, you know, it's not a cheap bike, and I wouldn't want to leave it out, hang it out all day long.
Exactly. Yeah, so sort of working with to have some of those racks just for quick bike parking, but also to be able to set aside some additional funds to have lockers or another space where you could lock it up and have it both secure and dry.
So if you don't get the grant, what happens? What's Plan B?
A Plan B is very similar to this, this, the, the plan that Luke talked about with the sawtooth entrances for the bus, that's, that's probably not in the plan, but this, this movement of vehicles from 213 off and into Myers Road is our plan. The enhancement that, that we are pursuing with the grant does the, the exciting transit-based ideas. Otherwise, it'll probably just be a pullover, offload, move on.
Well, I mean, I, I hope you do get it.
Oh, we do too.
I know that we're one of the communities in the state that we have some, you know, fairly major transit deficiencies, and that goes a long way to helping people out.
I may have missed it, but I see, yellow must be for the SSCC. That's a new building, or?
That's a new building, and DeJardin, the other yellow is an expansion. And then there's another building about where the word center is, and we are, you want me to move into, I'll just talk about myself. We are doing some programming for our first building at the Oregon City campus, so we're not ready to apply and come into that. We are working under the existing master plan for that first building, because the threshold is 50,000 square feet for our campus, and that's, it's turning into about 42,000, 43,000. But at the same time as we're gonna be moving that, that project through the city, we're also gonna be moving our class, our master plan amendment through, because we, we have some updates we need to present to you and get approved. So the Industrial Technical Center and the Master Plan Amendment should be kind of coming together and moving, moving through the city simultaneously.
Great. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So our next presentation is with Vanessa Visar of Trimet, and she's gonna talk about the planning that Trimet's been doing. Welcome.
So be sure and tell Alan that we were expecting him to be here. At least some of us were expecting Alan to be here.
Now you're disappointed.
That's right.
Well, actually, before you said, I will pass her.
I'm sad.
Do you work with him often?
I'm pleasantly surprised, so I'll just go with that.
I've known Alan for a long time.
Oh, really?
We've worked together.
Well, he's my director, and he's pretty great to work for.
He's terrific.
Mm-hmm.
No doubt about it.
So I'm passing around our current, Trimet's draft. Oops, did I do that?
Nope.
Uh, one moment. It'll, it'll pop back up.
We get the genie in the bottle again.
So it's Trimet's draft vision for future bus service in Oregon City and elsewhere in Clackamas County. But before I get to that, I just wanted to, first of all, introduce myself again. My name is Vanessa Visar, and I'm with Trimet's Planning and Policy Department. And I'm here to give you an update on what we've been working on as we look at improving bus service throughout the region, and also how that supports the Beaver Creek Concept Plan. So, oh, do I?
Yep, you got the power.
So this is a map of Trimet's Service District, and in addition to serving parts of Clackamas County, we also serve Multnomah County and Washington County. And we did five plans, these long-range plans, to cover our entire region, and Oregon City falls within the Southeast Service Enhancement Plan area, which you can see in the yellow. And you can also see that it includes, it doesn't include all of Clackamas County, just portions, and I'll show another map to highlight that more. But this Southeast Service Enhancement Plan includes Oregon City, Estacada, Happy Valley, Milwaukee, and Portland. And essentially, they're 20-year visions, and we have been identifying bus service needs throughout the region and making proposals to meet those needs and asking for input. And this is kind of an outline of the process we've been following. We started out by collecting data, looking at census data to see commute patterns, and then also just talking to residents and riders, surveying them, holding meetings. We held a couple here with the public, as well as some employers and other service providers. And then we took that information, and we developed this first draft vision of bus service in Oregon City and elsewhere in Clackamas County. And it's still open for- And it's still open for revisions, and we're about to come up with a new, the next draft and get more input on that, and then ultimately come up with a final vision towards the end of spring. So through our outreach process and by coordinating with city staff here on the various concept plans, we have, these are kind of highlights of what we've heard, which is better connections between communities like Oregon City and job and education centers, providing more local service and service to neighborhoods, and just improving service on existing lines. So based on that, is this map which you have the handout for. These are the proposals based on what we've heard, and I'll, I'll highlight a few in Oregon City. But one is, if you can see the line 152, this is rerouting the current 152 today, so that it serves Oregon City and provides more connections between Oregon City and the Milwaukee industrial area to access more jobs and employment. And then we're also proposing improvements to the line 32, which connects with the orange line to downtown Portland, and that would better serve, we're proposing increasing frequency and just providing better hours of service on that line to meet the residents' needs and also students' needs. It serves Clackamas Community College. And also, I just want to highlight line 79, which we're proposing for more frequent service to provide better connections between Oregon City and the Clackamas industrial area. And then finally, I want to highlight this kind of orange blob that you see in the Oregon, Oregon City area. We're calling these community and job connector shuttles. And essentially, these are areas that we've heard and identified there's a need for service, but the timing and scale of development is still to be determined in some of those areas. So we're not proposing exact routing quite yet. We'll do that in coordination with city staff. And we're also looking at these areas as potential for shuttle service to better meet the needs of the community. We can have a more flexible schedule with shuttles, and it can get in and out of neighborhoods easier than a 40-foot bus. So those are the, kind of the highlights. And I just wanted to quickly, briefly go over how we look at making service improvements each year. We're hoping to finalize this vision and base our service improvements off of this vision. So if you see something on here that should be added, please let us know or reconsidered. But this is, so we start out each, each year with our budget forecast, and that helps us determine how much funding we have available to put toward service improvements. So after the budget forecast, we start to look at either maintaining, optimizing, and increasing service based on the budget. So we look at, are there on-time performance issues with existing lines that need to be addressed? Are there capacity issues where we need to add more buses to a trip? And then finally, we look at increasing service and adding service, which is what we'll be looking at with these visions. And it's around that time, next, or late summer, we'll be coming back to city staff and having more discussions about which service improvements should be considered for the next year, because we currently don't have funding to do all the service improvements in here or the other planning, the other service plan areas. So we really want to work with staff to figure out what's the most important improvement that needs to be made that year. But in working with staff and looking at some other considerations, we'll come up with an annual service plan proposal and bring that out and get feedback on that. And then eventually, we'll roll out service in the fall of the following year. So that kind of outlines the process we take. And lastly, I just want to highlight the considerations that go into the service improvements that we put in, in these long-term visions, and that also are considered in the annual service plan process in addition to your input. But we look at if there's currently, if there's demand for service at the time to match putting the service in, is, if we add certain service, is it going to provide local connections in addition to regional connections? Where is growth occurring currently or where it's projected to occur? We take a close look at that, as well as equity, and then how productive a line can be based on the ridership projections. And then, these two final considerations impact what we're able to do each year, and that's the cost of putting service in, and then operation needs, such as, is there layover space for the buses? Because if we don't have a layover, it's, it'll be challenging to add more service at times. And then, do we have enough buses to add more service? So we're currently gearing up to start adding more service, and we don't have enough buses to add during kind of rush hour, so we're starting to order more, so we can be ready for that. So that's kind of where we're at with everything. If you have any questions or comments, I welcome them.
So, so we just adopted our TSP and we've done the multimodal option, you know, and we know that we're not going to get any kind of funding for any specific roadway improvements of any nature, vis a vis the Beaver Creek 213 intersection, some of the other big ones. And I know it's not a direct trade of, you know, the amount of money that's not going to be used to do these improvements, it's going to go to buses. I mean, I know that that's not realistic, but, but I'm just wondering, I'm just hoping that, that there is this trade-off, that, you know, that if we do the multimodal, that we actually do get those other modes of transportation that, that we've outlined in our TSP, and that, and that there is actually funding and a realistic plan to provide the alternative transportation that we all think we're going to get.
Yeah. I understand that. And I'm not sure if you're aware, but Trimet, as of January 1st, increased its payroll tax. And so over the next 10 years, we'll get about 4.5 million each year to put towards new service. So we actually have some funding now, whereas before we were constrained. So I guess it depends on the timeline for development.
Right. And I know that development is supposed to pay for itself, but there's just this big long lag period between when development occurs and when the money comes in to, to fund all of the people that are already here needing the transportation. And it just, I know it's not your problem, but it's, it's all of our problems really, and it's, and it's something that really drives me crazy about the way the system's set up right now.
I understand.
Yeah, thanks for letting me.
Other questions from the commission?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I just was going to get to the whole comment about local shuttles. The, I mean, it just seems to me that, to a certain extent, that's a, you know, that's kind of the way to go when you're looking at purchasing new, you know, buses. We don't need the big, huge articulated bus, but we need a, you know, a 20-person shuttle to go down to the end of South End Road and come back up Central Point and get all those people that are stuck, you know, four miles away from any sort of bus service, you know, into a transit center or at least into the city to make use of it. And it seems that, you know, in general, that that would be a better way to go to a certain extent for Trimet. I'm, you know, I know a few drivers, and I know a couple, one that lives here in Oregon City would love to have an Oregon City route. You know, they, they park it at Public Works or wherever, and then he goes, he gets it in the morning, and he spends eight hours running up and down the, you know, the four major artillery, arteries of the city, and, you know, gets people to places, whether it's the Clackamas Community Transit Center, or whether it's the Downtown Transit Center, whatever that may be. So I think you might want to, when you do your little survey of users, is kind of ask that question. I mean, we hear regularly, especially when we're having a concept plan and things, I don't, you know, you can have all the multimodal written down you want, but if a bus doesn't drive down the street, it doesn't do any good. And it, it, especially, you know, like I would think it'd be useful in downtown Portland, oh, not downtown, but you know, the, like, the east regions and stuff where you have the smaller streets, it just, where you're picking up five passengers. Like I see some of the buses that are, granted, during rush hour, completely different story. But, you know, at 2:00, you've got a full-size bus with three people riding it in. And being able to, you know, transition that, you know, from this time to this time, it's a 40-footer, and then from this time to this time, it's a 20-person passenger van, or whatever it might be. I think that's, that Trimet would be better looking to that as a future than, than continuing to just put more big buses on the main veins. Because if people can't get to the main veins, the buses still are, they're irrelevant. And I know a lot of people want to leave their cars behind. Granted, now that's a buck 75, there's less of them, but when they have four bucks, everybody wanted to drive or to walk, so.
Well, I'll take that back and share. We haven't been approaching it that way, so I think that's helpful to hear that perspective. How we've been approaching it, or how we're able to fund these shuttles is by having a third party operate them, like Ride Connection. And so because of that, we're unable to kind of overlap shuttle service with existing service due to some of our union.
Sure, I understand.
So, but I think that's a different way of looking at it, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, just have the vein and then the little puff at the end of each vein or whatever.
Does, does Ride Connection have a shuttle service in this community?
They, I don't know what they operate today, but we're not connected to a shuttle service with them.
Yeah, I know we've looked at.
Tom had a question.
I was just going to say, before Damon took my thunder, that's exactly what I was going to say. I live on line 154, up on Holcomb Boulevard. And right now, the Park Place meeting is taking place up in our neighborhood, and, you know that Pete, and the biggest complaint we always get, and I noticed it, is that big, huge buses come up that only twice a day is all I've ever seen them. And they have two or three riders on them. And I live up there, I would take a, I know the bus connection is down here on Main Street. Heck, I'd, I'd grab it there and come, come down into downtown rather than pay for parking looking for a spot. But there's only two, twice a day, one in the morning, one in the evening, and all the people, that's the Oregon View Manor, which is this kind of Section 8 housing. And they say it's not convenient times for them. That's not always the times. If you want to get somewhere, you have to go down early in the morning and sit for hours until you have to be somewhere. So, agree totally with what Damon just said. It's two or three people in the morning or afternoon, and it's just a waste of the bus to go all the way up there and sit.
And whereas maybe an hour later, you'd have 20 or 30 people.
Yeah, exactly.
But that would fill one of the shuttle veins quite nicely.
Yes.
Well, I, I'd like to kind of jump in and play off of what they've been saying, because tonight, you're here, and we have nobody in the audience from the public, which is tremendously ironic to me.
Oh, really?
Because when we have a plan that people perceive to affect the transportation system, this place is full of people who want to talk about, and I would say that's one of the top concerns that people express is transportation issues. And in fact, the last two concept plans we've had, and the last two or three major projects that we've had in here, that, that was the number-one major complaint, is that these intersections are getting overloaded with a lot of automobiles with single occupant vehicles. And one of the things that I think Trimet ought to really seriously consider, pretty much what Damon's talking about, is using the smaller vehicles, the smaller buses, to, to feed people into the mainline bus system. Because right now, the, I think the, the main problem, you, you hear the people talking from the South End Concept Plan, they, they don't want to have to get in their car to drive two or three miles to catch a bus. They want to be able to get on a local bus that will take them there.
Right.
And they don't have that option now, because right now, they have to walk a couple miles to get to the main bus line. So bridging that gap between the people that are living within two or three miles of the bus, the main bus line, but they don't have a convenient way of getting there. And once they get in their car, there's no good place to park, because all the parking rides are full. That's, that's the bridge.
Well, and what they end up doing is just driving to their destination.
Exactly. Once you get in your car, then you just drive.
Yep.
So I would challenge Trimet to consider this, this intermediate bridging that there's a gigantic need for to fill. Because right now, when we talk about multimodal transportation, transportation systems, most of us don't take that seriously, because we're not seeing that level of interest in providing convenience and service.
Okay.
I think if some of those people from the last two concept plans would have known Trimet was here tonight, they would have come in and said something to you. I didn't know until I saw the agenda for tonight.
So you hear a lot about the South End Concept Plan area?
Over, Oregon City.
And Beaver Creek.
Beaver Creek area, okay. So kind of where you're looking, where the yellow is today?
Ironically, the area that you have highlighted in orange would be the perfect area for that shuttle service that you're talking about to feed into the main lines.
Good.
And I guess to a certain extent, it almost stops right when where people kind of want it to be. But granted, that's our, I'm sure it's following like our urban growth boundary or whatever.
Or it might be our district. I'll have to look closely, more closely.
Yeah, well, especially because there used to be a bus that would, like, come from Cambie and drive up South End Road and pick up people, and then, you know, down to the transit center. And then when you dropped the Cambie line, because whatever reason, Cambie did their own thing or whatever, they lost that. And, and the, you know, South End, Central Point, Leland, Myers are the south end of the city's main arteries, and there's nothing there. You know, currently, nothing planned, and yet a, you know, 20-person bus making figure eights through those areas would probably stay busy.
Right.
You know, not 20 people in the bus, but it would probably have five or six people on a regular basis.
Well, people will walk half a dozen blocks to get to a bus stop, but they, they won't walk two or three miles.
Exactly.
And that's the problem.
Yeah.
And, and those are all dense subdivision areas. So there are people there, there are kids there, there, you know, there is a transportation need. And with our developments that we have planned, there will be more. Now, I understand, that's, you know, ooh, we're going to move, you know, 70 people more, 70 more people a day with a $150,000 bus and a $20 an hour bus driver. Is it balanced? I don't know. But I think it might be worth doing for a while, if nothing else is a test platform to see, you know, what that draws out. Because right now, nobody's trying, so nobody's doing anything. But if a bus started making loops, you know, it might come out of the woodwork.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate your comments. It's nice to know that there is indeed a need right here.
And I will say, in general, where Trimet serves, they do a good job. I've never heard a single complaint about where you are doing your job and doing a good job and everything, so.
It's where you're not.
Yes, we know there's a need.
Well, and, and that's the thing, you know, I've been riding the bus for over 30 years, bus, train, whatever. But it's, the, the one thing that I hear is a constant complaint by my fellow riders is the, the lack of convenience.
Yep.
And if, if Trimet could figure out a way to, to bridge that gap between the neighborhood and the main trunk lines, that would be huge.
Yeah, and, and I know I shouldn't say this with the current city manager sitting here going, budget, but maybe one of the partnerships that could happen is if the city wants it enough, they purchase the bus and then Trimet services and drives it, you know, as some of, some sort of a balance of, you know, you really need it, you've stepped forward, we will make it work for, you know, five years or whatever, you know.
We appreciate that, because there is a pilot out there to see how to move forward with these shuttles, so I think that could be a potential option, is more partnerships, at least in the part to figure out what the right routing would be, if anything.
That'd be trolley. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I just was curious if you know what the positive benefits of having the orange line open and its ridership has been?
So that's a good question. I wasn't prepared. I know the ridership has gone up, but I could come back and, or relay that information to staff. But it's, people have been excited about it, especially getting over the telecom. Have you had a chance to walk over it?
I mean, I know that as, as... I mean, I know that as Charles has said, that the parking ride is full.
Yes, that's been a.
Seven thirty every morning.
It's what?
They underbuilt the parking garage.
Yeah, that has been something we've heard quite a bit.
Yeah.
Take over the Elks parking lot.
They need to, they make it.
Maybe there's a way to lease some of it, I don't know.
They need to lease some of that Elks parking lot.
Well, that's where the parking ride used to be.
Right.
I can come back with more information on that.
Well, appreciated, though.
Thank you for the opportunity.
So, you're welcome to come back when we have an audience full of people.
Okay, I'll remember that.
Yeah, I'm shocked that there's not.
I don't think they knew about it, because I really didn't.
Well, the agenda was supposed to.
But they don't, they didn't expect this, it's not like the concept plan.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good evening.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda is 3A, Item L-15-01, Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Approval.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. So, on January twenty-fifth, there was a vote by the Planning Commission to approve the concept plan. And that was based on a lengthy public hearing process and a large record. And what we wanted to do was bring back a memorandum for you to look over and send to the City Commission, which summarizes your primary concerns in addition to the record itself. And so what we wrote here outlines, first and foremost, the transportation issues, emphasizing the need to emphasize to the Commission, the haste for, the need for haste in adopting the alternative mobility targets, and the need to improve TriMet bus service to the city and in particular, to the concept plan area. So, we also addressed Holly Lane. One of the, one of the ways that we recommended in the transportation system plan to reduce demand on our intersections is through extension and improvements of collectors and roads outside of the system. And one of the ways that the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan does that is calling for the Holly Lane extension through the concept plan area.
Sure, that did increase.
That may have the effect of increasing vehicle trips on that portion of Holly Lane and located outside the urban growth boundary in the county. And as a result, the Planning Commission recommends that the city coordinate closely with the county in the future to adopt transportation plans and road design standards that acknowledge that there are challenges there. Those challenges are regional and require joint solutions. I hope that we've addressed that issue with some clarity here. The second issue.
Wait, before you go ahead of that one.
Go ahead.
I know we sort of said that, but I think what we also said is that we wanted, we wanted to also consider not dumping traffic onto Holly Lane, because that was.
Because it had so many challenges.
Yeah, because it does have challenges. And that we know that in the near term and the far term and the long, long far term, it is not going to get improved. And I don't think that, that our jurisdiction should be contributing to increased vehicle trips under its current configuration and situation, which I guess in my opinion cannot really be solved. I mean, I hate to be negative about it, but Holly Lane's got nowhere to go. I mean, you can't, it's almost impossible to widen it.
Yeah, I believe that's accurate.
Well, not without taking people's property and frontages, but if, oh, God.
Sorry. Yeah, wait, I didn't bring my sunglasses.
But yeah, I mean, it's a constrained road right of way, and it always has been. I mean, it's, it's just.
It takes some major engineering to do, I mean.
And I'm not sure the engineering would be successful.
Well, I mean, like, the large part of the lane is, like, where it comes off of Maple and starts that first bit, is actually higher than the surrounding territory. So, by engineering, I mean, you have to.
Lower it.
Culvert, well, you'll have to like culvert the ditches and then build up the road beside it, or, you know, shave it down. But I don't think that's a solution, because you want drainage.
Right.
You know, and then as you start down the hill, there's gonna be times where you're gonna need to cut into the bank to have widening, because it'd be easier to do that than to build up a berm.
What about the geotechnical issues of that area?
Well, you know, frankly, I've been driving the road for fifty years, and I've never seen any sign of a slippage there. So, I just, you know, so when you cut into the bank to widen, then that means you're gonna have to have a good retaining wall, but it's not like we haven't figured out how to build those in the last five thousand years.
I've seen that one sharp corner there.
Yeah, well, I've seen my, I've seen my share of people in the ditches, so.
Yeah, but that's more, I'm sure.
I know, that's poor driving, that's, yeah.
But what it means is, is that every foot of Holly Lane is more expensive than a normal road.
So, are you saying that that's.
Well, and that's, that's the essence, really. I mean, we've talked on and on and like, I can't tell you how many hearings. Somebody's been here representing Holly Lane.
Exactly.
And the reality is, the Clackamas County budget has like zero dollars in there for upgrading that road.
They're trying to dump it off on us, and we better not take it either.
Well, the counties got there, I mean, they're trying to get roads just from point A to point B in rural areas.
In terms of county priority, that road is so low on their priority that it never gets there.
So, when I read this, I thought I missed something that you guys had talked about on that evening, that you had actually said this, that to put more of the call for the extension of Holly Lane south of Maple Lane, you didn't say that, is what you're saying tonight?
It says the city's transportation system plan. I don't agree with that. I mean, I said that when we were adopting the transportation plan. I said, I see no, I just don't see that it's going to happen. And with, with the funding that doesn't exist and everything else, Holly Lane is just, it's just like it's ready to blow up. I just.
That was my question, was this not discussed on that last night?
Yeah.
But where else would the traffic go, then?
I don't know. It shouldn't go there, I can tell you that.
Yeah, but the reality of it is, is whenever you end up with a constrained intersection, the traffic bleeds off somewhere. If it's, you know, a problem in front of Eastern School, they take off down Division. If it's.
Yeah, but where do they go when they're there in Holly Lane? There's, there's nowhere, there's nowhere to go.
The red light.
Yeah.
They drive all the way to Red Lake?
Oh, yeah. And there's no light there.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it'll be what it is.
Before the open Highway two thirteen, that was how I got down the hill, every day.
Going where?
Holly.
Into Portland.
Down Holly Lane?
Yeah.
I'm surprised you're still alive.
And you can make some really good speed going down that hill.
I've seen them in the ditch, that's what I say.
I never made it into the ditch.
I didn't make it into the ditch either, I cleared it right into the hill on the other side. Anyway, we have moved past the zone of discussion.
Yes.
Tony's doing a really good job, the city manager sitting there going, oh, it's my last planning commission.
It'll never be free of us, I'm sorry.
So, with the exception of an ongoing discussion about Holly Lane that we're not gonna solve tonight, I thought this memorandum that Pete put together looks really good. Is there any, can we come to a consensus that this memorandum can represent us going to the city council?
Well, I figured we will, when we present it, we will say our piece about Holly Lane.
You will be the designated speaker on that topic.
So, we're gonna move forward with it, including that statement there?
Well, the statement just acknowledges what's there.
Okay.
And, yeah, I think we can, we can amplify that a little bit. But I think, can we agree that this is a go for presenting to the city council?
Yeah, I just, I don't think it really gets to, it gets to the surface, but not to the root of what the community has presented to us over and over and over and over again.
And trust me, they will to the city commission.
Yes, I know they will.
And they have.
I expect no less. If they're not there, I'll be shocked.
Oh, they will be unsure.
They were there when I was on the city commission talking about Holly Lane.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's nice to say that we're going to, that we recommend that the city coordinate closely, but, you know, those are nice words, but do they get us anywhere? I don't know if they get us anywhere.
Well, it doesn't change.
It doesn't change the reality paradigm.
Yeah.
That's right. So, are we in agreement that we're concluded on this matter?
On Holly Lane?
On this memorandum?
Yeah, move approval or whatever we need to do.
Need a motion?
Well, you've already voted on the concept plan, but if you'd like to make a separate motion on the memorandum going forward, I think you should.
I think we should.
I think it's a good idea. Can we?
I agree.
Have a motion on that?
So, I move approval of the memorandum to city commission, dated February twelfth, twenty sixteen.
And you'll change the dates and update that before it goes to city commission meeting?
Yeah. All right. Commissioner Guile?
Yes.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Pete.
And when are we talking about presenting, this being presented to the?
It was supposed to be last Wednesday.
What's the date?
March second.
March second.
So, next Wednesday.
It's the next Wednesday?
All right, so is it a date, Charles?
We're on.
We're on, all right.
Interesting, we'll welcome you with open arms.
This will be third on the agenda of public hearings that night.
Oh, my God.
After the Holly Lane zone change and the hospital.
Do you have a, do you have an ETA that?
Yeah, I think, I think I'm gonna give, give Tony my phone number, and he can text me, because I'm not, I'm not gonna sit through all that again.
Is there a reason that they're bunching those all up? Couldn't they move this one to the next one, or are they?
They shouldn't.
Because of the length that it's taken, they've decided they'd like to start them moving again. It's been out there a long time, it's just a little unfortunate, all three came together at the same time.
Can we warn them that they should not do that, since we've already been through it?
Because there's gonna be some, a little ladies and other people who are gonna say, they did this so, because we can't stay up that late.
I think that, I think their only burden is to take the pile of testimony and they'll have some deliberation, but I think we've done most of the heavy lifting on it.
So, this is third on the agenda, so it's safe to say it's not gonna happen.
He's gonna text us.
At the beginning of the meeting.
It will, at the beginning of the meeting.
You wanna text us when it's about twenty minutes away?
I'll be sitting at home with bated breath, waiting for your, waiting for your text.
You could just be watching it online.
Do I really?
I don't think they have live streaming yet, do they?
You know, you can.
Do they?
See dishes.
Oh, really? I thought you had to watch it after the fact.
They have live streaming, and then it's like forty-eight hours before you can go.
Our glory in HD.
It's right in the middle, American Idol.
I don't watch American Idol.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I'm working, I won't say.
Okay, so, next item on our agenda is adoption of minutes. We have two.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate your presentations, they were very useful.
We don't have to talk about the Goal Five memo?
Not unless you don't want to. It's basically the edits to the Goal Five section of the findings that will be moving forward to the city commission, as edited by the commissioners and with input from Denise. I agree with everything that she recommended, and the section will be better organized into the subcategories for the Goal Five resources, natural resources, historic resources, and open space.
Good, okay, let's move on.
Okay, can we move approval for both of them at the same time, or do they have to be separate?
You can do them together, nobody has any objection, no.
I move we approve the, is that 4A sixteen dash zero nine nine?
No, you just say planning commission minutes for June twenty-second and August tenth.
Okay, and I'll second that.
I've got some corrections.
See.
Sorry, I can't pronounce this person's name, but anyway, you had a person's name in there with question marks?
Okay.
And here is, this is her name.
Thank you.
With exceptions.
Okay, all right.
That's who was at the meeting.
Excellent.
With a change in spelling, I move that we adopt the.
No, it wasn't spelling, it was an, it was an omission. We didn't.
Question marks.
She said it so fast that we didn't, so if you had read the minutes, you would've seen the question marks.
I did read the minutes.
Yeah, so anyway.
Adoption of planning commission minutes for June twenty-second and August tenth.
As amended.
As amended.
As corrected.
Second. Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
It had been so long, I had to read the minutes just to make sure I was there.
That's right, yes. Okay, and then, last but not least, we have communications.
Can I ask a quick question on the minutes?
Yes.
Tony, how come, I don't see any for July or other months, and they're way back to August, is there a reason why they get backed up so much?
We talked to them.
Someone asked me recently, how come there's never minutes out there on, in a timely fashion? I said, I don't know.
There will be soon.
Okay.
We were waiting on our minutes person to complete all of our minutes, and we just never really rose to the top in a timely manner. So, the city has contacted another person to do the backlog of minutes. So, the next few hearings, you'll start to see large batches of minutes, and we're all caught up.
So, somebody actually comes in and watches the video and does the minutes?
Yep, it's hard to find people that do that.
It is very.
They drink a lot of coffee.
That's been our problem.
To do it right.
Because they're insane.
They have to do it right.
Okay, sorry, I interrupted, I just needed to ask that.
We've had to expand, we've had one person doing it, but it's just.
It's a lot.
It's tedious.
It is.
Okay.
Laura? I have some updates for you.
Okay.
Okay, so first, today was the first day for our part-time planner, they'll be working half-time. His name is John Stutzman. And then we also have a full-time assistant planner named Deliana Vasaliva. They both come to us from different experiences. Deliana's come to us from Siskiyou County, and John Stutzman has worked a variety of jobs, including Community Development Director for City of Roseburg and a long career at David Evans and Associates. So, we're excited to have them join the team. Also, our planning commission schedule. So, here's an update of what's to come. We'll be canceling the next planning commission hearing, and that'll be March fourteenth. Then, on March twenty-eighth, we're gonna come back to you with an explanation about how we read our code for food carts. So, if you wanted to do a food cart, what our code says, so it's an explanation. And then I'll also talk to you a little bit about creating a type-one site plan process. So, for small things on commercial buildings, if you wanna put in a new door or a really small addition, is there a way in which we could change your landscaping, things like that, through a type-one nondiscretionary process? So, we'll work through those issues with you then, too. Then, on April eleventh, we are going to invite the TAC, or the Transportation Advisory Committee, to the planning commission. And we are going to have a Transportation 101, or we're gonna have a work session where our transportation engineer is going to talk about how our code reviews transportation. We'll talk a little bit about how the ITE manual works. And then we'll talk about planning commission's role in reviewing transportation and its impacts, as well as the tax role, and also reviewing transportation and its impacts as well. So we'll have a work session, and that should be very exciting. Hopefully, we get a big audience for that. If you have any questions or anything in particular you're interested in regarding transportation, please send me an email directly, and we'll make sure that during the presentation, we hit on those topics.
If you want a really good turnout for the meeting, just drop the word Holly Lane or Beaver Creek Road in there.
I'm just going to say nothing. Beaver Creek mentioned to April? Wow.
Just, just note those somewhere in, in the notification.
There you go.
And you'll have an audience full of people.
And speaking of-
Oh, no.
-those intersections, we've started our alternate mobility study for the city. We identified three intersections, right? Beaver Creek 213 and the two on-ramps. So we're starting to gather our information and figure out how we move forward, looking at corridor studies or adoption of alternate mobility standards. So more to come on that.
Something that I would like to have the discussion in the TAC thing is, um, yeah, I don't know, I'll just blunder about. A discussion about VOC, and what is it, how is it calculated, what does it mean, you know, versus A, B, C, D, E, F?
Mm-hmm.
You know, because frankly, I never thought those ABCs really meant a whole lot, because I don't know that there's ever been an A. I mean, you know, the A is what you draw on the piece of paper, but by the time you build it, it's maybe a B, probably a C by the time the first car drives on it, you know, but-
And, and that's all dependent on time of day.
Sure.
It might be an A for a few-
From 4:00 AM to 5:00 AM.
A few hours during that 24-hour period, but it could be an F later on in the day.
Right, when I want to run it.
I think Beaver Creek 213 is a great example of that.
Yeah.
We could drive out there right now.
So, you know, just, just something to just, you know, this is what VOC is, and this is what it means, and, you know, this is kind of the impact of us changing to that. What, you know, I mean, because to a certain extent, it gives us a better measure of how bad an intersection has become, or how good it's become with the improvements. Ooh, went from an F to a C. Well, what does that mean? Went from 110 to 86 percent. That hell, you know, that's, that has some value, so.
Actually, if I could-
Great.
I'm not sure if it's the right time to do that with TAC, but it would be interesting to know the interaction between the city of Oregon City and the state, especially as it refers to coming off the Westland Bridge, Westland Oregon City Bridge, as they come into downtown. I mean, they have left, I guess I talked to somebody from TAC, and they said, "The sign got moved down from, by the, by the Oregon Department of Transportation instead of up above." So everybody's turning left there, and people honking their horns.
Causing accidents.
Yeah, they're halfway into the turn of the sign.
What is the relationship between us and them, that this is part of our city, yet they say that they have no control over that intersection? Yet those of us who have businesses down there listen to the honking and the irate drivers, and that's just a, a big accident waiting to happen?
Do you want to know how many times that I have reported that to Public Works? They said, "Oh, the sign is there." By the time-
Down the left now.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's even a stupider location than the where it was before. It needs to be up there, at the top, that says, "No, left turn."
Because anybody who's used to that is now honking at everybody coming through there and trying to run them, up against them to prove a point. You're not supposed to turn left there. And sooner or later, they're going to start meeting in the middle of that intersection. But it would be interesting to hear what is our relationship with the department, especially when it's right within our city limits.
That's great. And we also have a lot of county roads within our jurisdictions.
Beaver Creek Road.
We can talk about that as well.
But that's downtown, right in a real mess.
I know. It was on the bridge as you drove, but nobody could see that, and now, I mean, it's, I, I've seen it. I know where it is. Nobody is looking down there.
Well, I, I think Tom raises-
They're looking up there.
-a really good point, is that Oregon City has really three different jurisdictions of roads running right through town.
What would they do if we just took the sign down and put it up there? It's like-
Well, it would take them about four and a half months to do anything about it, because it took them almost a month and a half to take down the sign. And we put up my senior year that said, "Welcome to Westland, a suburb of Oregon City," when we put up that bridge, because nobody could figure out who was supposed to get out there and take it down.
Why would we go out and take that down quickly?
Well, we didn't, but it's, and so our response is, it's a state problem. And then the state took three, almost four weeks to get somebody up there to, and it was just hooked. It wasn't bolted. It was just hooked over the, you just pick it up and drop it in the truck, you're done. But it took them a month.
I know.
So, by the time we move a regular sign, they'll never know.
I know, and that's what I'm saying. You know, sometimes you just have to be a little more proactive.
So, anything else?
Uh, the last thing-
Before you get off of TAC, so here's a question that I've been pondering for about a month now. And it seems to me, not that we need any more work, but let me just throw it out there and then you can, you can kill me later.
Or no.
It seems to me that, that TAC needs to be jointly managed. It isn't strictly an engineering issue. There's a lot of stuff that they're doing involves, involves, to me, the skill level and work that we do as planners. And as I was reading their purpose, authority, and duties, I came across, oh, they're supposed to be including neighborhood traffic management plans. Hallelujah. What does that mean? I don't know. I'm reading, I've been reading their bylaws to find out what their purpose and authority is supposed to be. And I said, gee, I have never seen, heard anybody mention a neighborhood traffic management plan. I know that years ago, Oregon City Planning Department talked about doing neighborhood plans, and that was something that, that's still on the drawing board somewhere in the ether. But a neighborhood traffic management plan? That intrigues me.
Sounds ambitious.
I think it sounds proactive. And I'm, I'm all about that.
I think in a lot of places, it's needed.
Yes.
We totally need it.
Yeah. And I'll ping you offline. I'd like to have something electric vehicle in that discussion, too.
Nice, yeah.
Did you hear that? What was that?
Electric cars.
Great. And the last thing is that you're going to start to see some emails regarding marijuana and us creating code for if marijuana becomes legal. So some, we're looking at time, place, and manner. Pete's going to be running that project. You'll see a website going up online soon, in the next couple of weeks.
We just ignore it?
We'll have a couple of open houses as well.
I was at a city commission meeting when they once said that they would not allow it here because it's against the state and federal charter, and that they, they have to follow federal law. It wasn't legal. Has that changed? I know that some counties are making a lot of money off of it.
It's being challenged in court, so the worry is that-
In Oregon City, or just-
Yes, our, our decision on our business license has been challenged in court. If we lose that, and actually, when the vote to legalize marijuana was statewide, it passed in Oregon City, 52 and a half to 47 and a half against.
That's pretty close.
So, we have the moratorium, based on the business license being challenged in court. We have a vote in November that'll just go to the electorate of the city of Oregon City. If both of those go down, and we don't put something in place, then we have nothing to fall back to.
We did do a TAC, didn't we?
Yes.
So what do you mean if they both go down?
Well, if we lose in court and the voters say we'd like, we want to legalize marijuana in Oregon City, then we have no zoning in place.
That's what I thought you were saying.
And we have to treat it as a retail.
Yeah, because my biggest concern is what you see in a lot of places where suddenly there's seven green crosses up, like, in one area. And it's just, you know, crazy, you know, overnight, these dispensaries are popping. One thing, the green cross is safety, not marijuana.
Exactly.
So I got a problem with that to begin with, but they're just, you know, the, I don't know what, you know, what, just globally speaking, whether there's a density provision we can put in for the businesses, or, you know, whatever. It's, it just-
Do you guys have a radius for vulnerable population members, like schools and hospitals?
There's the OLCC regulations, but then what Oregon City would adopt on top of that, as far as time, place, and-
I think it's like a thousand feet or something like that.
Thousand, yeah.
Some people are saying, too.
And then, we can potentially adopt not only zoning, whether it's not permitted or conditional, or, but also site pun and design review criteria for-
Suppose essentially, you could make the, make the buffer so large that they would, that there's no way that they could ever even be located.
It's like the same buffer we have for billboard.
But see, the problem with that is, the only place they could build would be downtown Oregon City, because the school district is gutted in interior school system, so-
We have school.
We could keep them on the outs, out from the fringe, but we couldn't keep them from the inner city.
From the burbs, right.
So we're looking at reaching out to our existing neighborhood groups, our Main Street group, the Chamber of Commerce and businesses, as well as residents and schools.
It, it's an inevitability, whether it's this year or in 10 years, or whatever. I mean, so we need to, we need to start working on some sort of rational, you know-
Is there a specific definition for vulnerable population?
I will check into that.
Okay.
And then Laura talked a little bit about the new staff members that we were hired, that we were able to hire. So, the Riverwalk, as part of the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, is kicking off. We had a meeting with, the design team was in town last week. And so as part of that, the partners group, which has made up the two electeds and the CEO from each of the organizations, met a couple of weeks ago and approved a draft IGA, Intergovernmental Agreement for Governance of the Project. So essentially, we have multiple jurisdictions putting in staff and money into the Riverwalk design and engineering. And so this governance sets up the decision-making framework, authorizes the budget, you know, identifies the resources each agency will be bringing. So, as part of some of those agreements, I identified two of our planners, Christina and Kelly, to be primarily dedicated, roughly 90 percent, .9 FTE, to the Riverwalk project. And then through the grant that we were able to receive from Metro for the development strategy, part of that included funding for an additional planner to help backfill the resources the local jurisdiction would be expending on that grant. And then some other funding sources that we were able to put together allowed me to, allowed us to identify this one and a half FTE in a limited time duration to help backfill the planners that'll be dedicated to the Riverwalk. So, I didn't come across a bunch of money and got the staff up planning. This is a temporary measure to help with while we're doing the Riverwalk over the next 18 to 24 months.
Speaking of which, have you got somebody in mind to fill the vacancy in planning that just opened up?
I do not yet.
Okay.
Can I ask, on the, what you just discussed, is there a current brochure, like a trifold or anything? I'd say 60, 65 percent of my people who come by my store down there don't know anything about what's going on, and they're from out of town. I mean, out of state, or in Westland, and they don't know. And I would love to have something I could turn, hand out to people and let them know what's going on here in Oregon City.
Uh, we probably, we have some dated material, so as we're just beginning now, we are, you know, new information will be produced here shortly, and I believe-
So someone comes up, I know we're going to have a lot.
That the first open house is March 30th, from 4:00 to 8:00. Just double-check that. Yeah, Wednesday night. Uh, yes, it's, we're planning to have in Oregon City. We're trying to find a location large enough to accommodate what we expect in terms of a turnout.
March 30th?
Correct. It's a Wednesday night, 4:00 to 8:00. And then, the other thing that we're working on are the alternative mobility standards for the Highway 213 corridor. So we'll be negotiating with Oregon Department of Transportation and trying to identify a scope for that work, so that'll be something that we're working on.
How much is the county going to be involved in that?
We've had, we've had discussions with them.
We have.
I just wanted to mention, I still have on my radar screen, as you know, I have a grave concern about state agency coordination, and particularly with Goal, I believe it's Goal 11. I hope I got the right goal. And, and it involves the school district. I don't, I don't know if we need to work with them to do like a 101 on what that coordination means, or whether we actually have any sort of an MOU with them. But my concern stems from the fact that, I've said this before, that we have disinvestment by the school district in the core of Oregon City. All of the schools are on the outside, and I literally had a conniption fit when I saw in the Beaver Creek Road master plan comments that they said, "Yes, we're thinking about buying property out there." So again, we have another possible sighting of a school out on the edge where we have to do all the driving, and all the school buses, and all the traffic and congestion, and we're not looking at, at coordinating with them so we can reinvest in the schools that we already have. And that has a lot to do with planning and coordination, and helping them understand what their role is in the big picture. We did the same thing a long time ago with South Fork. I mean, they're one of our providers, and they are a special district. So all of those guys, you know, the, the South Fork, the Tri-Cities, I mean, they all, to some degree, have an effect on how our community grows and how we plan it, and instead, you know, we kind of have us, and then we have all these people out there in these little orbits, but we're not interacting.
I guess I move to close the meeting.
I think we had one more thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I don't.
There were some statistics in your packet for what we've been processing in 2015. As you can tell, the number of applications has gone up slightly for new lots in the city. We had about the same number of lots as we did last year. We are keeping busy. You can see on the charts that are, we're starting to see a little bit larger in scale of subdivisions, so maybe a few more lots were maybe in like the 35 range, whereas a couple of years ago, they were smaller subdivisions. We anticipate staying quite busy through 2016. We have an uptick in the number of pre-application conferences, so you may start to see some larger projects come before you as well. Are there any questions about our statistics?
I'd really like to charge my-
Just on the same night.
Are there any scheduled to be on the ballot annexations for Beaver Creek or anywhere for May, or is that past time?
Not for May.
We've got to do our mobility standards. I think, nobody can do anything.
Not for May. We do have a pre-app for emergency annexation coming up, relatively small.
Okay. Just wonder if there's going to be anything on that ballot.